Good evening and welcome everyone. This meeting is being recorded as it was in us and will be available on the city's YouTube channel. Roll call, but is it just state your name?
Mayan.
Yeah, was here. Thank you.
Nick is joining us by phone. Thank you. Next we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda, which includes the meeting agenda and a couple of tobacco license renewals. Any questions?
As usual, anything?
We haven't been notified. There've been violations.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Same.
All on paper?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. You know.
Thank you. Number five. Consider resolution authorizing approving a loan agreement in amount of three million and 10,000 general obligation for the first base bonds. This is a series of steps that we're taking. Cynthia, do you have any comments?
This is the last step in it and then it'll be funded July ninth, I think.
Any questions for Cynthia on that? If not, need a motion to adopt that resolution, please?
So moved.
Same.
Roll call, please. Tom?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Moving on to item number six, 6811 Williams Boulevard sanitary sewer extension. I have some historical information to provide and then some steps that we're going to follow this evening. Historical information for the council. At the May council meeting, you did approve an engineering agreement for the sewer extension along Williams Boulevard, which includes a 6811 Williams address. At the June 10th meeting, you declined to accept the bids that were received on this project.
No, just send out the bid.
Send out the bid, excuse me. And here we are this evening with also requested at the last meeting that this item be brought back on the agenda for full council review and that some additional information need.
I'm confused, Joanne. Didn't we, didn't they send it out for bids and they didn't get any response? And then they asked Peak to give them a quote because I didn't get any better. Oh, okay, that's the first one. I was gonna say, didn't we do that? Okay, sorry, I'm back with you now.
Okay. All right. So here we are this evening. Out of fairness to the property owners, the decision needs to be made this evening. And here's some things that we need to take in mind. First of all, the overriding question here seems to be whether or not we follow existing ordinance 95.05. In your pocket, you have several items under item number six, A through D, involve the decisions necessary for the execution of that ordinance. How the discussion's going to go is in order to encourage a productive discussion, council. Please review all of these items under six prior to making any motion on any of the items. So we're going to talk about everything first. No motions during that discussion, not interrupted. Public comment will not occur until after the council discussion is complete, but prior to motions being made, unless the council has a question for the property owner. And of course, that would occur during that discussion. After discussions occur, after any public comment, then motions on the items will be made. So before we start down that path, please note that ordinance 95.05 is in your packet along with some supporting feedback from Chris and an email from the Lynn County Health Department. Thank you in advance, everyone, for your cooperation. So let's start with item six, A. This, we talked about a little bit at the last meeting, talking about competitive quotes. Shane, do you have anything to add from what you discussed last month? For the last meeting, excuse me.
I mean, just that the project is, you know, the season forward.
Nick's on the phone, so it's really important for us and for Nick to be able to hear everybody. So if you could go to the podium, thank you.
I guess from a project standpoint, if the city moves forward, it'd just be delayed a month. We'd be looking at, you know, extending it to November instead of October.
So there's information in your package, Shane?
Yeah, updated dates. I think those are minor, couple minor tweaks to the plans, but nothing that didn't really change anything.
Any questions for Shane on what the bid process would be? If not, for the moment, let's go on to item B and just talk about connection fees, because we never got to that point at the last meeting. You've got some information on your packet about that. Some different options. The council, your feedback, please.
Chris, can you hear, no rolling, but I mean, obviously we have it in here on the packet or just add your own verbiage or?
Yeah, so I've got a whole Kenway meeting and asked them generally ballpark figures of what the septic system would cost. I had to talk to Shane since our last meeting about their tank is fail, although we're not acceptable to the current standards of septic system. They'll have to replace the tank, not just the leach field, which would make a big difference in the pricing of it. Well, Kenway, I mean, he said that, you know, a standard septic system with a normal leach field is going to be, I sent that email, 15 to 25,000. And then if you have to go through a Sandpoint system or any other fast system, it gets quite a bit more expensive from there. So using those figures, I just kind of went to the middle of the road of 25,000 and give you the starting point. A lot of the properties in Fairfax, I don't know how you're aware of this, are going to be pretty wet, especially down in the old parts of town. Part of Leach Field. As opposed to this one, it's more sloped, pardon the saying, deleted per test up there, but Brian, do you know?
I do not. I'm not sure what they proposed or what status is. I would assume it's a little drier than downtown, but I don't.
Chris, in your packet, you put some information about how many possible properties would be impacted by?
Yeah, there's 92 current properties on septic systems within our city limits currently. And then there's, I believe I had 11 empty lots on there. And I had that one of those is within 150 feet. Now, we're wrong. There's three of them within the 150 feet on those empty lots.
So most of those are up West Cemetery, I would assume, in Southview, Southview and West Cemetery.
These ones belong to highway, south of Dairy Queen, those move along the highway. There's a lot of them.
Long view.
Is this just residential or is this residential and commercial?
Well, mostly, three of the, two of the empty lots are on commercial. One at City Hall and there's one up there by bigger, yeah, bigger empty commercial.
And am I getting ahead about when you talk about annexation and your, your information about the impact of?
Right, most of that I took right off, I would say code, I would say as far as annexation, what's expected for the cities as we move forward, add some property.
And how that annexation affects, obviously this ordinance with having sewer and going through the process of when a owner's own septic fails.
Right.
What that effect is if a city, anybody in the state of Iowa goes against that. I mean, can you expand on that?
Well, the state's really looking for these properties as we're annexing and in our city limits to be hooked up to our sanitary sewer system to control the sewage that's released, you know, the DNR monitors Brian's sewer release a lot more than septic, septic, the only time they're inspected is when the property's sold down, which is actually a fairly new law in the state of Iowa. Every unit's had to do it before, seven years ago maybe. So really, as we grow, my biggest key point on the annexation is we just finished an annexation agreement with City Cedar Rapids. If we don't extend our sewers when we require them right now, for example, that would give Cedar Rapids excellent ammunition to come after us in future annexation disputes. Cedar Rapids is typically running their sewers out of these waterways in front of their developments.
But we do have the option not to approve this. Our, the way that our ordinance is written says you may, you don't have to, it's not required. So we do have the ability to make choices based on individual situations, which is why it's worded that way. So in that being said, these four lots were involuntary annexed into Fairfax with the development that happened up in Heartland Heights. So they, they didn't voluntarily come. They got taken with that development because they were in the county. That development came, they come in, what is it, 80, 20, I don't even remember the percentages anymore, but?
They wouldn't have came in, I'd say they would have came in with.
So they, they came in, they came in at one of the developments, but they would have been taken. They wouldn't have had the option of not coming.
The, the ordinance doesn't say may, it says required, hereby required.
There is one, I read through all of those and one of ours says is somewhere in there does say may.
But this is the paragraph that pertains.
Because I know it's not required. We are not forced to do this.
Hereby required, that's what this says.
So which, out of all these other ordinances that you have in, in our packet tonight, one of those does say may.
That's your one ordinance that we tracked it. Just because it's a question of like.
So I know it's not, I know we don't have to, as far as I know. And that, so that would be the one, the one thing I would bring to your attention is that they were out in the county and asked to be in, in town. The other thing is where the cost that we're talking about here and what we're trying to make palatable for them is the cost of running the sewer along the frontage of their property. They still have to pay and come up with the money to run it from that point up to their house. And their lot is probably the smallest of the three. I mean, if you look at Melody's mom, she's widowed and on social security. And I think her hookup fee would be, I mean, it's, hers is like one of the biggest. You could easily double or double that number. So, because it's not just this number they have to pay, they have to pay the hookup fee on top of it. They have to run the pipe all the way from that point up to their house.
And that's when it, when it fails. When it fails.
So it's not, so when we look at this, it's not just, it's not this cost. I mean, so yeah, we're going to tell him, okay, it's kind of, we're only going to charge it 20 or 30. But then he's got to come up with the money to run it from that point up to his house as well, whatever that cost is. I'm just saying, and he's got the smallest lot.
Well, the only one we're referring, your residence tonight is the 6811, if correct.
Yeah, exactly. But then it's the, but if you follow, like once you say precedence, if you do that, then?
Then all the 92 are.
You're saying, yeah, you're talking about like maybe when 691, 6913, 7201, if slash, well, where?
Because if you do this, then, and then you follow your logic, then you will inevitably make every one of those houses hook up, irregardless of the situation. So I'm just like, let's talk about the big picture now before, and, and granted, like if we're going to run sewer down Southview, that'll be a development, something that way. If we run it up that way, it'll be, again, we'll be making a major improvement. It'll be the whole, it won't just be one house halfway up the hill. Well, if, at some point when we decide to run and do a load station over there, it'll be the whole, you know, it'll be everything, you know, size, you know, I mean, it won't just be three houses kind of thing. But they're, they're going to have the same situation over there.
So right now, all those houses, these four properties, one is doesn't have a building on it. They're, they're getting services from the city of Fairfax for garbage, snow removal, whatever it might be, so it's hard to pick and choose what someone can, can use and what, what they can do. Let's not forget that regardless, Keith, right? Where they have some costs that we're going to have to pay, right? Your septic is down and needs to be replaced. If I understand correctly, your leach field and your, your key needs to be replaced, right?
That's what they say.
Okay, so the experts are saying that's what needs to be replaced, so regardless, there's money you have that has, you have to put pores to get it reinstalled. So I think we have that in mind that there is some fees that they have to pay because it has failed and having an ordinance and maybe we re-line my memory and just see what's where that is because I didn't, I missed that.
I did read through them all. I just know what's in one of the things that's in, in the packet.
How I read the ordinance is they have to, that's why we denied Southview putting in theirs. And something I talked about in the past is not arbitrarily deciding that in the form of things, so you can't be accused of bias or favoritism by applying the ordinance equally across everybody. Looking at this, and again, I'm referring simply to the property, not the current property owners, by connecting now, they are saving long-term by not having to replace the septic again. I'm not suggesting they're going to be replacing your septic in 25 years, but a future owner would be. And I don't know what their current water bill is, but I have to look back to where I did that. They'd have to own that property an incredibly long time to somehow make up the money. I'm doing a septic for, I think, 75 years. I'm doing the cost of the septic versus a water bill for however many years it was.
We're talking connection fees at this point. Let's look at some other items here. Item C is talking about construction easements and potential reimbursement to property owners. Shane, you want to share some information on that, please?
Just let me know if you want me to open a document.
Yeah, you can open. Yes, probably. That's my opinion one, yeah, right there. So this is just an estimate based off of the assessed value for permanent temporary easements and then removal, they have three trees that would be removed at 500 bucks per tree, which are three typical costs for two, removal reimbursement costs. And then permanent easements, 50% value based on the property and then temporary construction, usually 10%. So I put in three different options.
Were you guys made aware that you would lose trees for this? Did they tell you you would lose trees for your, three of your trees?
Well, I guess some were in the wrong place.
Okay.
We had a company tree that went down and was in the storm.
In the Drayton? You replace them with these trees?
What's that?
You replace them with these trees? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So these three options compared to estimates, that's, those are three different options in discussing reimbursement to the property owner. Using option one uses 110% of Lynn County assessor's valuation. Not 100, but 110%, which comes, that's how Shane comes up to 41,71 for eight. Option two mixes in with limits, which is they use commercials since they're right next door and the area, and option three, it's kind of a lend or a blend of that, which, so I think those, those estimates are to try to help, in good faith, to try to help pull down a cost of that in the end is what is decided tonight, right? I'm not sure those make sense to you, those numbers up there, but so under one, the comparative estimate of 5,560 would be a reimbursement for what is being put on, potentially being put on your, your property. Makes sense? So as whatever the fee, again, I just want to make sure we're clear that we're trying to, options we have out here is to be amicable for the resident to try to help things out, just like I mentioned earlier. There's cost involved here, right? There is, there's no way around it and trying to make it where it, it helps out the property owner huge. That's, that's what those three options are. That's proposal of 5,560 off, if that's what's decided. Makes sense? And that's part of removing the trees in order to put that septic and sewer in, right?
Yeah.
Just a reminder, something I brought up last time, and I printed a little bit of Iowa code, but you know, that puts me to sleep when I try to read it, but the, the connection fee, whatever the net amount due is, the council can decide and we'd have to take action after the documents are drafted, but to allow them to pay for it, we can put it on as assessed against the property and then be paid over five or 10 years like property taxes. We wouldn't be including the cost to run it from the main to their house because that would be paid to a contractor, but the city portion, which, you know, if they put a septic in there, unless they get a loan, you know, the contractor's not going to give them that kind of deal.
Never thought about that to a, that, so can you, could you do that on a case by case basis?
Yeah.
You know, not for payment plan as opposed to upfront.
Yeah.
Does that make sense what Cynthia's talking about? Let, let's, so hypothetically, if it's decided, one of the options, right, for put in the city or run septic up to the end of your, whatever that bill is.
Not septic, Tom.
Sanctuary, right. Let's say that bill is $5,000. You can pay that over time, right? One of some via property, just be extra every, twice, twice a year to help the septic or write a check for all of whatever that dollar amount is having that option. So again, trying to find out ways to help out property owners, you know, I mean, it's not, certainly not, me personally, I'm not here to assess these statistics. The last three meetings turned very clear with that, so that way we try to figure out how we can get something figured out.
So item C is about potential reimbursement for easements required. Item D is potential reimbursement for tree removal, all going back to the property owner. Do you have any other persons for Shane on his three options there presented? There's a range of numbers, one from five something to nine something maybe? So council, need some more discussion here before I open it up for public comments, please. What are your thoughts on connection fees? So it's back up to item number B.
I'd maintain the average recommended at 25,000.
It's a conversation point of, of the ordinance itself.
Pardon me?
The, the ordinance itself or revised ordinance?
Yeah, well, that's item E. If the council opts not to follow the ordinance, then the recommendation would be you need to change the order. Any other thoughts on connection fee? For this specific property? There applies setting a standard for others.
So just to make sure the numbers are out there, the estimate that is given is 121,000 to, to get the, to get it to your, your property. In that scenario, 25,000 connection fee, we also had three comparative estimates, not through one being 5,500 all the way up to 1,000 off of that 25,000, right? So let's go with the big number, let's say 9,000, so 25 off, take nine off 25, you're at 16. Now let's switch gears to you having to put in septic in, in your own, right? Again, you have to do a leach field. It's probably, I'm going to guess here, probably a lot more than that. And I'm, I'm going off of the numbers on what Chris has here, right? 15,000 all the way up to sand filter system of 30,000, his numbers. I don't know what yours are. Do you have them? You know what they are? Has someone, has someone given you an actual estimate on, on what it would take to do both of those? Because that would help possibly in your favor if you had that. No one, I didn't know if you had a document like that to show this is what the estimate is.
No, no.
There, that's okay, correct.
Any other feedback on if you move forward with the extension on potential connection fees?
I like option number one because of the fact of it 110% of Lynn County assessor's valuation, that's a number that we have no control over, that's Lynn County, working that number in on the calculation, that's nothing. And it's based off 110%, not 100, 110 helps out even more, right?
You're talking about easement and tree removal reimbursement, Tom?
Yes.
At this point?
Yes.
What about connection fee?
The 25,000 to what, what Chris recommended. Based on the three estimates that he, that he got Kenway from. Based on those, those three numbers.
Any other questions, comments, council, before I open it up for public comment?
Which option were you looking at? Number one?
And the reason why I look at one is because option two and three work in commercial. Option two, which is limits, there's commercial right there, so I don't, very valuation. Option three is the valuation to 60,000, utilizing 75% of rental residential land valuation and 25% of the commercial. There is no commercial there right now. Nor in the area like Nimitz is.
All right, so if I don't hear any other question, I'm going to ask the property owners. So do you have any other feedback before I open it up to any other comments? You're just needing to know what to do. All right. Alright. Anybody in the public want to make any comments, huh?
Our counter one-on-one, Lynn's Boulevard Fairfax. How many of you people on the council have a septic system at your business or home?
We have one in our business.
Would you like to pay twenty-five thousand dollars?
We're forced to hook onto the city, so.
And how much, and how did you appreciate that?
It's what it had to be done for.
It is.
So we did it.
And you could absorb it, because how much do you make a year there at home?
That's not a degree to say.
Yeah, it's quite a little bit, I would guess, for just folks.
Probably more typically to commercial property.
I really feel sorry for these people. They didn't ask for this, they want their septic system. They didn't ask for any of this, Bernie, again, I brought this up. Two meetings in a row, I said. Bernie, who is more looker than mayor, Joanne. Why don't you all consider this? This makes sense to me. Even though Mayor Bernie is not the mayor anymore, he did say at that time that. City sewer water would most likely be coming up to our property installment eventually. And I said, I don't want your city sewer or water, then he says, well, that's your choice, but I'm going to tell you this, if you don't hook up when we come through. It'll be free. If you hook up when we come through. But if you don't hook up, if you don't hook up with us, then you have a problem, you'll be footing the bill. And, and see, that, even though I didn't like it, that sounds a lot more fair, but you're forcing these people. And you say fourteen dollars a month, that's minimum, how many people in Fairfax have a minimum of fourteen dollars a month?
If they spent a hundred dollars a month on sanitary sewer, they would have to have the. Septic last for approximately twenty-two years before they had to replace it, you said the minimum was ten?
No, fourteen.
Fourteen, so let's.
That's minimum.
Let's split the difference. I don't know who is spending a hundred dollars a month on sanitary sewer, but let's even split the difference, go one-twenty divided by sixty. You would have to have that another one, twelve to thirteen years on top of that, so thirty-three years.
I would much rather have mine than pay you guys, because I don't like your water, most people don't like Fairfax's water, to be honest, you like Fairfax's water.
Yeah, to the thing, I have no problem with it.
A lot of people don't, I don't want it, but whatever.
We're talking about sanitary sewer, I don't think I would want sewer water.
Wouldn't you? Really?
Coming into my house, no.
Sure, why not?
Going out, that's a different.
Oh, really?
But I think, I'm not sure what.
Alright, well, well, we're, we're off topic here, come on.
Okay, so in my opinion, this is a big mistake, y'all will just hook these people up if they have to be hooked up. And not force them to pay thousands and thousands of dollars. You guys are going to get paid back, and when you talk about money being spent, you're spending money on all sorts of other things in this community, let's look at the budget. You know, these people didn't ask for this, you are forcing them. That's a big difference, and you should think about that, that's just wrong, very wrong.
So the council has the option of, and looking at connection fees of that. That is an option for them.
Well, I think it's an important distinction to say that we do not profit off of this. We lose money running the sewer up there, while we do have established connection fees, it does not compensate the total cost of the project. Moreover, the charge we do for sanitary sewers basically break even for me. Our rates are slightly over a hundred percent of expenditures for. Unexpected occurrences like the poop pool or the line to work, no problem, so I think that's an important distinction.
These people didn't ask for this.
No, I just say, I'm not, I'm not talking about that, I'm saying I watched the last council meeting where it's implied that we profit off this, we do not. I think it's important to point that out.
Obviously, Fairfax is profiting, profiting off of a lot of things that they're spending a ton of money for. This is a necessity, these people need to have a septic system, they need to have water. You know, those are important things, other things I see, and we all see money being spent more hand over fist. Is maybe not quite so important, but nobody seems to question that, so maybe I'll look a little bit deeper. And help out people who actually need these things rather than want certain things.
Okay, thanks Bart, anyone else want to speak on this topic?
So Keith, I'll go back to what I said. About ten minutes ago, that. Not had, based on these three estimates, anywhere from fifteen thousand all the way up to thirty thousand. Under a scenario, twenty-five thousand dollar connection fee taking off. Fifty-six, five thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, you're at twenty thousand. You could have more. Expenses in, in replacing your system that you have now, plus you have to maintain it every year, or. I don't know if every year, I, I'm not familiar with that, but having to pump it out, someone to pump it out, whatever might be, regular maintenance, right? So, net, net. You very well could be ahead, I, I, I don't know, but it's definitely, it's not a scenario where. You're going to be what, going this route, if you're going to weigh in the rears. Right, now that you're done, you don't have to worry about it ever, and then when you go to sell the property, getting one that ever happens. Is that a plus? It could be, don't know, we don't know. I just want to make sure you're. We're throwing a lot of information out here, so I, I want to make sure that. What we're putting out there, you're, you're clear on what we know. Right, and what we're discussing. It's a lot, it's a lot to digest.
Council, any other questions, feedback? Are you ready to start doing some motions then? Perhaps we're going to do them in reverse order, because depending on how you vote on item number E. Will depend on whether we have other items to vote on. So let's look at item E, discussion and possible motion. Concerning allowing the septic system to be replaced, repaired, and to require hookup to this. And not to require hookup to the city's sanitary sewer system. And realize, your vote here could be setting a precedent for the future. Any motions on that regard?
And a motion on that. Because I'm just, you know, just looking at the front of grand in the last meeting. I guess we make a motion on, on that. We're discussing the ordinance itself would be on future, right?
Yeah, changing the ordinances on this agenda.
So allowing septic, we're, and we're talking about this specific property, oh, at this. Correct?
Not really, we're just talking, we're gonna change the ordinance, I don't think it applies.
Yeah, you're setting a precedent.
Yeah, it's not just a property, this is.
And realize that it's.
Get it all, you have ninety-two properties. Ultimately an option, if I understand correctly. Depending on how we change it, I don't really want to.
But you are not changing the ordinance tonight, you're just taking action, whether it's all about.
What I'm gathering Dan's asking is, and like. Joanne said, is if we think we need to change the ordinance, and that makes. There's no decision on him then, because we can't establish or shouldn't establish, can be listed beforehand. If we're going to consider changing. The ordinance itself.
We need a decision on their particular property this evening, if you looked at the email from Lynn County Health Department. They have a clock ticking on their septic. They're at the end of their ninety-day grace period, you're in violation, so that's.
By, by, in stance, twenty-five thousand dollar connection fee minus option one, taking it down to nineteen four forty. Writing them name of plan options, and giving them all rolling to get the sewer extended, sanitary sewer extended.
Just to go, as. Mayor just said, just in reverse order, I'll throw a motion out for E of allowing septic for this property. Not requiring hookup to the city sanitary. Sanitary sewer system.
Then ask why?
I understand. The precedence that, that we're setting, so my. Expectation is that go back to the old fence and not just make one-off decisions per set. I, you know, kind of what, what Mary Ann was saying as far as. The properties were already here, we're not talking about undeveloped lots, you know, new developments, that the properties were here. Without the city's infrastructure running. Adjacent or through the property, the city itself will be a lot of expense to connect that. So it was like three hundred thousand. So that's partially what I'm looking at is to say, if we already had, if all we're talking about was a connection fee to a, a line that was already running. My team would be, would be different, like considering we have to put a lot of infrastructure down for them to connect. I think that's a, to me, a, a gap in the ordinance, right or wrong, that's. What my thoughts are.
And you just say it was three hundred thousand, it's a hundred and twenty thousand.
To run across the board.
No, we're just talking about their priority.
No, the, the total cost for everything is six hundred and nineteen if you would do it from start to finish.
Also, I was at price.
This is the.
We're just talking one property.
Yeah, this is.
I get that, I get that, I'm just saying.
The smallest property, but.
If you start on this one, and force on the next one, and the next one, next one, until you get a four.
That is, that is my, that was my concern, is when we get to Melody's, who's now a widow on social security. And she has to hook up. And we're talking three hundred thousand dollars? I mean, if you would do the math and do the numbers. It's crazy. So I'm just. But I'm looking at all of them, but maybe we take action on this one, and then we revisit. We revisit the whole scenario and then figure out how we want to move forward, but.
Yeah, I don't look at this as being a blueprint for every single going, as far as comparison number one. It's every single scenario, because everyone's different, right, and I mean, how far you got to run it where it's at. Vance is, she could be. Possibly hooked up, I think we talked a little bit last month about last week, she would possibly hook up to back behind him or on the corner.
That's why I was asking that question, does she have, do, do we have to run it all the way through, do we have to keep it like cycling through? Or can it dead end, do we have to?
Yeah.
Or, you know, can she come in from the other direction, so the cost is not as much?
Would make perfect sense, yeah.
But I don't know if that's actually a good idea for sewer, because then you have an area that doesn't have flow through it. Is that correct, like to, the sewer, just like you do the? Or does it not matter? Doesn't matter, okay. But moving forward, at some point, we'll have the same situation, when and if we decide to go on the other side of the highway. Up the hill, lift station, up the hill, hill, or lift station. And all those, their connection fees are going to be. You know, their, their width of their lots is substantially less than it's going to be for them to get up to their houses, because they all sit so far back from the street. So we're going to have issues. But, so my thought is, when we look at that, you have to approach it as, without a developer helping to pay for costs. That's going to be on us to try to, if that all worked, so we need to think about those things moving forward, I guess, at some point.
I think our ordinance is written if it's within a hundred and fifty feet. Of, of our existing infrastructure.
Yeah, and I'm just saying, we've, we've talked about doing that.
The one I'll do it there.
Yeah, at some point. And that leaves Southview. Just following up on a comment that Chris has included in your packet, so in the future, if we annexed the area to the south. The Southview Road. That would impact those properties as well, if we had sewer running along. Southview, at the time that annexation occurred, or any other property to the stop of the city. Keep in mind.
And if we ran water all the way down Southview, when their septic failed, probably.
Have they had water there now, or?
So Dan, do you have a motion? Specific to this property? Specific to just this property?
Yeah, since we're not talking about everything specific to this property, yes, it allows this septic.
Alright, so a motion on the floor. Do I have a second from anyone? I have a question, you do have a brand new well, correct?
Yeah.
Right, so that was the one where the Lynn County, we did, did it without us knowing.
Where's water being in front of the lot?
Right. A motion? Do we have water in front of all of those parcels? Water, but not sewer. Have a motion, need a second in order to proceed, a second. Alright, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Net?
Nay.
What'd you say?
Nay.
Was that a nay?
That's a no, there are times to turn.
Wow, alright, so. So the motion failed. So now we need to go back. To A. Discussion possible motion concerning the competitive quotes. Shane, what do you need to hear from them on this now?
They just want to proceed or get in votes.
Need a motion for Shane to proceed to get quotes.
Motion for Simp to get in votes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item B, discussion of possible motion concerning the connection fee.
We wrapped C and D under one motion, we should keep it separate, that I motioned earlier for. Twenty-five with compensation of option ones. Bringing the total application to nineteen four forty. Pretty much several.
Separate, please.
Then twenty-five thousand for the connection.
That a motion?
Motion, all set up.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
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 So is that four, yes, four yeses and one no? Item C, um, potential reimbursement for easements.
Motion for compensation, option one, I second that.
Option one on the. Easements, okay, we have a second. Did I hear loud, all in favor?
Aye, aye, nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, item number D, reimbursement concerning tree removal.
Motion.
For.
Is this compensated replacement, trees are available.
I think that's already included in that.
That, that, I know of that, because I threw movement also.
Well, they're both, they're both together.
Makes the match, yes, but I think the amount's the same on the trees, no matter what.
Yeah, it would get the same, yes.
But let's move it to make it cleaner. So the reimbursement is what, five hundred?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred, five hundred a tree, five hundred a tree. So need a motion for reimbursement of five, fifteen hundred dollars for tree removal?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Did you get all that, Cynthia?
Um, yeah, and I just want to verify this motion, I'm gonna. To mention the fifteen hundred as shown in option one, I don't want anybody to think that it's a double fifteen hundred, right?
Fresh. Okay. You understand what happened here? He's a lawyer, so we'll be extending the service to your property. Shane and, Shane's going to be giving. Some bids for our cost, any, any idea, you said in a month or so, you thought the project would begin?
No, we'll, we'll put it up, says close tomorrow. But council will be able to consider it by the August week.
To August meeting?
Because mills for next week, the pot will be, so, I have navigating program, so. Council will, will consider the co-hosts at the August meeting. So construction will be this fall, so they will be able to help and help complete the building. So, so how does that, that key? As far as.
What has maintained or separately, they're only. What kind of costs does that kind of occur? I feel that this has gone on over three different meetings and part of that. You're occurring extra cost as far as delays, I'm not sure we should.
What?
Meaning to, to maintain what he's got until he gets to them.
I don't know. Is there any extra cost to keep going? I don't think so. Mainly issue with the health department, and I will respond to them tomorrow. I told them when they sent the email to us. That it was on our agenda for this evening and that.
Yeah.
I would let them know what decision was made and hopefully they'll work with Keith and his wife.
Yeah.
To allow them to continue until we can.
So Keith, what I would say, if you have some extra charges fees that you're occurring because this has been a delay. Bring it to, bring it to our meeting and, and discuss, how possible reverse and we discuss it, right?
Are you pulling your tech?
Right now, are you pulling your tech or anything?
No.
What he's saying, what we're, what it is is, it's reached the end of its life cycle. Hope that there's no issues, Lynn County wants it resolved, so I'm gonna tell them resolve. But it won't be until November that he will be allowed or able to hook on to the city.
Also, this time limit thing did not come around until we approached them about. Hey, this still probably our issue, not hers. Well, then all of a sudden, now we gotta do ninety days.
They knew what last fall.
Last October is when it started.
That's when this all started, okay. They didn't mention the well again. Then we have. It's a, it's a law, you know.
Gotcha. I just wanna make sure that they're not incurred any fees that, oh, you had nothing to count. That Lynn County wouldn't charge them because of.
Well, I will contact Lynn County tomorrow. I'm aware of what the decision was. And if there's any issues, we'll talk about them, so.
Can I just mention, so if your family decided to want to. Consider requesting that it be put on your, as a lien on your property, but if the net amount is payable as taxes. We would need to have you send us a letter, signs, you know, request it such, you don't, you don't have to. Because we won't look into it or put it in place unless requested by the property.
Was it a good cost?
Twenty-five plus the currently nineteen thousand four hundred forty dollars.
How much?
One thou- nineteen thousand four hundred forty.
That's to the city and then you'll have contractor costs to run, you have to pay someone to run it from your, from our line up to.
Or sell the house. You had to sell it with the subject, but. You guys ain't making it easy.
Well, I, I just wanna let you know about that option. And that would only be an option that we would put into a motion if you request it, okay? What, what you're saying is the nineteen thousand dollars that you would owe us for hooking up to our sewer. We could allocate that back, put a lien on your property. So what happens is that nineteen thousand goes. On your, with your property taxes and you just pay. A, a certain amount, like you would, extra, so you wouldn't have to pay the nineteen thousand at once. It would get spread out over your. Property taxes. But, you know, the property owner would need to request it, uh, but, you know, the city can put. Uh, assessments on property, uh, without the, the property's owner asking, but. There's a whole list of requirements that if you weren't doing it, they haven't requested it. But if they request it, it's a simpler process, but you would still. I would still have to contact the attorney after he asks us and then we'll figure out how to do it.
And nothing would be due until the, the project was completion, ready for you to hook up. So. Sounds like fall. Any other? Comments?
I have a question. Shane. So when we set it out for competitive, we, the council awards the contract. With that contract of information then given to the homeowner in case they would want to piggyback. And get a lower quote, you know, to run it to the house then. So you'll be getting some information at that, right?
Yeah.
I mean, they don't have to go with that hundred, but they may.
It's maybe helpful and Chris can give them contacts for media and the other one, so you know, they can give them some. Some goals for extending their service too.
Okay. Let's move on to item number seven. This was also a previously discussed item that comes back with some new. Information regarding the Hartland Heights Park Restroom and Pavilion Project. John's gonna talk about some new information.
All right, so after the last council meeting, Pink. Uh, shopped it around further with, uh, more subcontractors. Tried to reduce their cost as much as they could, it, um. Result, they ended up shaving off about twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, from their original quote. And that's, that's about all the further that I can log around. This is, this is based on that original funding you sold back through. Twenty-four by twenty-four for no.
Nothing's changed.
We did ask, you know, for comparison's sake, could you give us the approximate call? Switch to a one solve, true, weren't able to get us that, uh, that amount in time for it. So.
Cynthia, remind council, uh, how much is on our CIT for this project?
Oh, I don't know. I don't have CIT. I know cash, what cash we have available.
CIT, one of the two hundred?
Uh, yeah, I think that's where we were at. Shane, does that sound right, John? It was, yeah, for construction, yeah.
Two hundred, that's what I thought.
Right, very, very, on the one bump that last thing, was it two hundred, two oh five or something?
Why don't I say it was some two hundred for lots, uh, because we didn't have enough to cover.
So I did some, uh, research of, uh, funds, so John let me know that. With the two thirty-six, seven oh one, and they have approximately seventeen nine left in engineering costs. So that would bring the total yet to spend to two fifty-four, six oh one. You have parks fund money that we earmarked for this, from a, an old bond. Of a hundred and seventy-four, three sixty-five. The parks has a savings account, which they are willing to pledge the entire amount for their project. Of fifty-four, nine forty-eight, ma- makes a total of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three thirteen. So those cash amounts are twenty-five thousand, about three hundred short. I looked at the new bond that's gonna be funded, you know, parks is a purpose. Um. There was thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred twenty-five dollars unassigned because. We sell bonds in five thousand dollar increments, okay, so that was just kinda leftover. Um, the bidder paid us a premium of eleven thousand, three dollars and eighty cents. So that made fourteen thousand, five twenty-eight eighty as unassigned in the bond. The well recap went over budget, uh, because of changes that Brian, you know, made you aware of, of eighty-three tent. So that leaves new geo bond money unassigned of sixty-two eighteen. Uh. And that's assuming all the projects that the bond money is gonna go to would come in right at. The estimate, you know, not under. So if you take that off the twenty-five thousand, then you're nineteen thousand, one hundred short. And, uh. You have like eighty-nine thousand and unassigned lost money. In the fiscal twenty-six budget. Eighty-nine thousand, five hundred, almost six hundred. So that is some cash involved. Looks like we have a couple of Parks Board members here, would either one of you like?
We do. In, in fact, Jill Pressler, I would like to add her to Mike. Jill actually lives in the Hartland Heights area and was part of the, uh, group that. Put this all together when we started thinking about the park and what we were tasked with, now whatever, go ahead, finish that.
Yeah, I get Joe Pressler, fourteen twelve Fox Tail. Um, as Joe said, I was, um, a recap, cause I, excuse me, I have a few different council members at the time. Um, but I was one of the original residents that came forward when the proposal. On behalf of the city came out and on the agenda, which we found out was related to a grant that they're applying for. Uh, but that is kind of what sparked the interest in our neighborhood, um, to put our voices into the project. Because a large portion of the park was consumed with a parking lot and a rest of very limited play areas. So fast forward to, um. It, a few steps, right? And we came to the council and, and you tasked us with designing a park. Um, and almost direct to goal at the time was for both its current neighborhood and the future state. Um, which as you know, that neighborhood is nowhere near its current. Plated future state. So there are a lot of families that are not yet here. Um, and not yet using that park potentially, if we're talking on five and ten years forward. So. Me, as a neighborhood, had done some polling on what we thought was needed. Um, and at that point, once we removed the parking and some other things. Uh, the real things that a, a park would need is play structures that accommodate childrens of all ages. Which is why we really felt strongly about the basketball court for our mid-range kiddos and the playground structure for the little kiddos. But a park is truly not complete without shade and facilities. Because you can't continue to sit there and enjoy them and spend time in them. And utilize them to their potential if you have some need, um, for those type of inconveniences. And that is what our park currently does not have. And at the time we put forth our proposal, uh, there was not some, you know, funding and support for us to do the project all in completion. So we came forward with a proposal where two steps in, where we did the, the core function of a park, right? We did the, the court and the playground first, so that our kids could get there and they could play and we could start having that enjoyment. And we made this portion of phase two. So we're back here today to ask. For the support of completing the park. Our board, our, we feel very strongly that it isn't. Completed yet and that what we have right now isn't meeting the needs of all of our community. And all of our neighborhood, and especially when we're talking about future state. And, and we've done the work, we've already done the groundwork. To make this as cost effective as we can today, but it's never gonna be a lower bid if we wait. And we put it in down the road when we determine that there's a need then. I think. What? Will happen is it will, more people will come to the park than you realize and will stay longer. Then we can quantify for you and that we can justify on the return on investment. That's really not what we are in it for, right? But people will stay and will continue to enjoy the park longer. And I can only speak for myself as a mom of a one-year-old and a potty-training four-year-old and a nine-year-old. There's, it's incredibly complicated to navigate all the kids' ages and to rush home to go to the bathroom or to try to. Corral them all so you can use a porta potty. So grandparents can't sit, there's no shade, right? It's a, there's a time window for people to stay and enjoy the park. So. I think we will find that people will come if we build it and it will be utilized and it will be enjoyed. And the sooner we can do it, the more time we provide that.
Thanks, Joe. I think really the, the thing that I'd like to emphasize there too is that. It's never gonna be cheaper than it is right now to put that pavilion and a restroom in. It's only contin- gonna continue to get more expensive. And I think we have shown, um, you know, financially, we're able to, we're able to make this work. But I, I completely agree with pavilion, especially on a day like this, you're out there playing basketball, it's horrible. Uh, not playing basketball, sure, um. But I guess respectfully, we must be talking clearly different people about the, the restaurants. Cause I'm not hearing much demand, you know, also living out there and further away from the park. But if, if we're saying, you know, cause we have, say, a one to four, a nine-year-old. Are we gonna put bathrooms in around, around the trail, around the pond? That's further away from our people. Right, but. I understand the necessity for, for some bathrooms. At, at parks where it's a destination park, like we have at the complex, Hawks Ridge. But that's not what the Hartland Heights Park is. For the most part, people live a few blocks away. I, I understand that there's, there's little kids that, yes, you leave, you leave your house two minutes later, they have to go to the park. I get that, I've done that. But, you know, to spend a hundred seventy-seven thousand hours on the bathroom, it doesn't. Makes sense. Plus, it, it gets rid of all the green space that you have to learn, which there's kids. Yes, they play football on the basketball court, don't ask me why, but they're also playing in the grass patch too, that's all gone. So what happens if people are playing basketball and the, uh, there's like eight, ten kids that throw a football run, where are they gonna go play? Cause now it's back.
Our design left the whole back area, the whole back section and the eastland is all. So we still designed the green space to be utilized. They're utilizing it out because it's there, absolutely, but. There would still be green space to utilize in the park. And, um, I mean, I don't see kids. Be, they're gonna enjoy it regardless of some of it's here or it's in the back. And I agree that right now, of the houses around, it's super convenient to go home. I live one street over, I know that I'm closer than, than you, you are, but. I just don't understand, I guess, why a restroom doesn't seem like a basic. Facility to offer. We have parks that are requesting restrooms that we couldn't put, you know, putting them in. That would be incredibly costly, if not impossible, because restrooms are just something that happen. And, and. We're only a few streets over now, but I mean, how many streets up and over are we talking that are gonna be utilizing this park? In the, you know, future state of the neighborhood.
Well, it's continually expand, um, up north until you get that big hill. But from what I gather, once it goes past that, there's gonna be another park.
It's substantially smaller.
Correct, Joe? It's not very small, it's not like smaller.
Like, yeah, I, I thought it was a little bigger. Uh, however, though, the timing of all of that isn't in the next five years. That's not where the timing's gonna be. So, again, what they were tasked with. Was to, uh, not only do it for today, but also for future use, which is probably the next ten or fifteen years before. All of that expansion happens. And in the meantime, I think Jill has made a very good point. About why the restroom's necessary in that particular park. Uh, you talked about a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars for a bathroom. I will tell you this. This, I'm not trying to be, um, smart alky. It wasn't a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars last year. And you still said no. It won't be a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars next year either. It will be considerably higher. It will never be as cheap as it is today and as cost effective as it is today. To put the facilities that the people have, have asked for. And again, remember, they started this in two thousand twenty-two, it was three years ago. So all of the, the information that Jill has is still very irrelevant.
And I guess, I guess, I don't picture putting in all the work to make a pavilion structure and a. A place to enjoy and then still have to have a porta potty on this side. We have the capability already there to run something. And make one nice looking structure easier to maintain, that's much more aesthetic and just get it done all at once. Uh, I mean, I'm not hearing people complain to me about the porta potty, but it. I don't think it makes sense to keep a porta potty right next to the pavilion. If we have the capability of, of making this one a closed structure, like we said, we talked about, you know, let's, let's can, let's meet in the middle, let's. let's can, let's meet in the middle, let's condense it to one restroom, shrink the size down, like find a way to compromise, but I just think the structure should just be completed at once and provided all at once.
And John, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had talked about this too, P. Should we decide that's the route we wanna go is cut that bathroom in half? It's possible that Pete will back out of this. Because it will not be a a project that they're they're interested in now. Whether Pete backs out of it or doesn't back out of it, shouldn't necessarily make your decision on what you wanna do with this. But the other thing is, you know, the parks department's got fifty-four thousand dollars, almost fifty-five thousand dollars in their savings account. And they're willing to put it up. They're willing to take all the money out of their account to the very last penny to help this project.
Council?
Sandy, can you pull up on satellite or two where you wanna put the pavilion, the bathroom?
Well, John's, John has a copy of it right here.
Yeah, okay, because I was looking through here, I didn't see your, your, uh, picture.
I probably should have grabbed something. Did we ever determine why no one wanted to bid on this project? I think that's how the problem is, we just didn't get any bids for it. And now I feel like we're just, EIB didn't wanna do the bonds, the bonds that are required. Or I, uh, state of coke. So like, we couldn't have like cost again give us a bid because we have bond. So is there any way around? Do any folks that don't require that?
No, and it, to be honest, it's kind of a, a project. I'm not sure that you want a contractor in there without a bond. I mean, the
It's just
Most contractors, most contractors use bonds all the time, they do.
And, you know, I would assume that the Iowa code written that way. Well, I'm just like, there's a million contractors in town, we couldn't get one person to bid on this. You know, like, and we reached out to certain contractors, but we didn't reach out to any of, like, the smaller building directors. And John reached out to me because that's who he knows, but well, and if you remember when we put the splash pad in, he was the only one that we could get to respond to that too. So the city has this history with P.
Okay, council.
Build a house for what you're paying for this.
Did you get your question answered? I guess that's that's my concern, we could build a house for what we're spending on this. But you're saying, so I have an issue with that, that this is so expensive.
Well, straight up. Joe points correctly, it's gonna be more expensive every year.
I just feel like we didn't get good competent bids. We didn't, we didn't reach out far enough.
We originally had this in concept, I think the project, the cost is gonna be to have done. Then I was one of them, Mary Anne, where the other one bought at the cost, said we'd face it then, so.
For parks we don't really need because we have how many parks and we have the big parks, so. Spend a half billion dollars over here.
Fair, and the reason I don't think that's fair really is because they don't have a connection, a pedestrian, a bicycle connection to access those ones. Okay, they would have to get in their car and go somewhere.
Which is hardly looked at at all.
And sometimes, also, we're we talk about facing. But the question is, if we're trying to make both parties happy, and we might have to rebid it if we want to shrink it down to a bathroom. And what I was asking about just now, with the drawings, the right last one, if we move the bathroom, it would essentially be less closer to, um, Eagle View today, eat a bathroom there. And be a lot more creative than it used to run around. Now, the question is, would we have to rebuild or the rebid it was shrinking down to one, possibly? Number two, you develop, I think, not bathrooms, but I say we don't need bathroom over at High Park, let's just go use the creek like a real person. Okay, there are no creeks where that park is current. And I don't think whoever is that that have the address on here for the person just north wants someone taking a whiz on their side, not that I would ever, um, but.
So my question is, is there a cost saving since you have the, you've got the pavilion structure already there, is there a cost savings instead of doing a separate brick or stone bathroom, adding a regular bathroom to the back of the
The pavilion.
Pavilion structure.
I was actually looking.
Just doing one uniform bathroom with maintenance room on the back of the structure.
Give me a second, let me look, I'm trying to remember bottom here. In feeling, I can't remember that part, but I could
A lot of pavilions just have the bathrooms, you know, because they have a electrical and all that stuff, and so it's like on the backside of where the spaces that has all those things.
I know that that was our original intention, we designed it that way so that there was like a restroom and a storage and it could all one structure, it was never separated.
Do you want this?
I just Yes, yes, it's something like that, more cost-effective than doing the separate stone building.
I guess I could show you.
I mean, does that get us what we need and substantial, substantial savings would be my Man, you want the block building.
But then, the other thing is, then your, uh, your pavilion needs to be bigger than twenty-four by twenty-four because you've just taken some of the footprint out. So now all of a sudden, instead of a twenty-four by twenty-four, you're probably thirty-six by twenty-four so that you have room to put the bathroom in there and still have twenty-four by twenty-four. Twenty-four by twenty-four is not a a a big pavilion anyway. That's your your garage, your two-stall garage.
Yes, yeah, I'm sure that.
So is it, it two hundred, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar, or is it two that that is over two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred?
Well, where did we end up in engineering fees on this one? If we go with their two thirty-six, didn't I hear it would be two fifty-four? Right?
You've got seventeen-nine left in engineering. That's if you don't change the plans. If you change the plans, you're gonna have more than seventeen-nine in engineering.
Seventy-nine on top of the two thirty-six, so that gives, uh.
Two fifty-four six.
And but what is the savings if you delete the bath, the, like, stone bathroom? And just do a one stall and
They didn't, they didn't give a, come back to John with that cost check is hanging out, I gotta do something with this computer.
If we made a savings as a last resort, is that?
I don't even know if that's a last resort. I, we're, I'm putting that out there to say, hey, this is how, uh, this is how committed to this project that the parks.
John, remind me how many companies you contacted originally for bids?
Oh, there's five. EIB, Weary, Griner, and, uh, I can't remember the other one. And they all showed interest. Three of them showed high interest right on the day before, quote, this was the original solicitation back in February and March. And that the next day, we decided on, and, um, you know, indication for me ID, we're honestly, didn't really do it. Weary, they, they had a mason. The mason backed out at the last minute, he was coming from a lot of cities.
So I think the starch, the block structure might have been some sort of block. Because Griner, all those guys are post-frame builders.
Yeah.
The bathroom part is not something they would do.
The block structure, I think, is, you know, Joe, man, it's easy to clean right. People walk in there and just spray everything out, um. Now, so you can't do that with a wood for any structure, but.
Council? What would you like to do?
One other thing I would throw out here. In loss, uh, for twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six, we have a, uh, amphitheater in there for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I would be willing to redirect that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of loss from the amphitheater towards this project. That's how important this project is to the the parcel movement and that it it, uh, comes to fruition with all the work that, uh, you know, Jill and the board has done on it. So there's
I mean, when you look at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a bathroom in a pavilion, I just, like, literally, it's a house. And I'm sorry, and I know the block bathroom and all that stuff, but I think we can do it cheaper and better. I just don't. And at some point, I know we have money here, we have money there, and we're stealing money from this.
We're not stealing any money.
You know, I mean, I mean, you're taking money from Taking money from this here, you're doing it, you're using it here, but then they don't have any money, so then everything CIP, we're still gonna put stuff to CIP for parks. So I get what Joe's saying, but in in the end, we will still fund the projects that they bring to us. But I just, at some point, we need to be a little more responsible with our, just because we have it, doesn't mean we should Yes, I I think we just, we've gotten to that point that we just I just feel like we need to be a little more responsible with some of this. And it, the point that we're all like, oh, two hundred and fifty is nothing, let's do it, almost doesn't sit well with me.
I don't think anyone's suggesting that two hundred and fifty is nothing. I don't, I don't think that's at all what we're suggesting.
But I just It's gotten to be the normal, and I just doesn't matter if we have one bid or not, or if it's, we feel like it's appropriate or not, we're just gonna do it.
So what are you recommending, Mary Ann?
Would be very unpopular, but I, let's go back to the post-frame people and say, can we let's get into a post-frame pavilion with a bathroom in it. And just do one bathroom with a small maintenance area where they can keep supplies or something and call it good, that, I mean, that's a functioning, nice building that would will suit well over there at this point. I just
You want basically, if people wanna run it, it's at the sh- Dalton Park in Hewitt. It's what you're looking.
But honestly, all the post-frame people, he didn't get any of them to bid, and I think the bathroom probably was the outlier. By, they probably were like, oh, we don't wanna, we want the building, but we really don't wanna mess with that kind of thing, is probably what happened, and they all just
EIB was interested in that whole thing, and and clearly wants to, even though it's it's masonry work, those guys still have masons when they do their post-frame building. You know, brick veneer and everything else, they still work with masons in general, that whole thing. So I don't know if that was the holdup, like I said.
But it's weird that he did Griner or anybody.
You know, that was, that was, that could be any easier with the floor wall.
The floor wall?
Yeah, we would, well, that isn't nice.
No, well, you can do something to the outside.
Yeah.
I mean, you can do whatever you want.
Well, they make, and I looked at the cost, they make precast ones, they just get shipped in and, you know, set them on the foundation.
Like for laser, you mean?
You're looking at over three hundred grand for one shows. We looked at Ramtech, all sorts of pre-fabricated ones, and it was three hundred thousand, it was still, uh, you know, and their cap, those are all like, oh, you know, same with, yeah, B, they all cap on prices, and it goes up every year, every month. And fifteen percent, so like Joe said, next year, um, so I think going general contractor out like Pete is Well, if you guys wanna look at, you know, a wave frame structure, doing like a joint bathroom, uh, pavilion, I'd have to look at the rules as far as having to go back through and requote or rebid. I believe what we, um, as long as the cost is lower, only not raising the cost project, um, you know. Research that, and I could touch base with P and C, they still have interest, you know. Uh, go, go on these other options that you mentioned, so let you know what you wanna do and we'll push it forward.
So you, you, your compromise is what I showed you, the single pavilion with a bathroom attached to a single bathroom with a toilet mirror.
Yeah, I drove by, I drove by Hughes Park too, and they, and theirs is a, uh, is not a block building either, it's
There's, Pete did that one, they did the pavilion and restroom back here, it's fancy.
And that's like a two-bathroom structure, but it's not a block.
You find that acceptable, putting the, that bathroom, and then possibly you're gonna have more chipped in this way, allow more green space down here. Assuming it's a, an elastic cost.
No, I'm still stuck on the, the bathrooms aren't, or restrooms aren't, either, at that apartment.
John, would would you have some more information from Pete and possibly others by the July council meeting, since it's kind of early in the month this time?
I doubt it.
I think the main point, first of all, is, Mary Ann, what you said earlier, is we, we tend to go big rather than
We just rarely ever say no to anything anymore. It doesn't matter what the cost is.
And I think that's well taken for me at least, going forward down the road, right? As far as this project, Johnny mentioned ten to fifteen percent increase. You know, with the land, we're gonna be in the next year. So is it gonna be higher than that? Minimizing a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, let's say they take twenty-five off of that, well, we're gonna have increases again of ten to fifteen, so what 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 are we really saving? You know, um, we don't know, but we're not, we understand where we're going. We wanna save, we have some options out there for what Joe mentioned. Say, uh, using their savings, um, as as one of them, and that gets us back to the two hundred, because time is ticking. If we put it off any farther, we've got another ten to fifteen on it. Do we get better bids? I don't know, but is it enough to make it move, to make a big difference? I probably doubt it. We've talked about it for years, I don't know how many years it's been discussed and I think it's just tough to make a big change at this point, but I do wanna say again, Mary Ann, what you, your point earlier is well taken as far as build big.
Well, we got to this point because when the project originally came, the price tag was so big that we went that's done, you know, that's just not something we can do right now. So we decided to kind of break it into pieces to make it more accountable. Here we are.
Right. Which, breaking into pieces, we still have ten to fifteen percent, almost pieces, so. Which breaking into pieces, we still had ten to fifteen percent almost pieces, so.
So the agenda item is to consider approval of Pete's most recent quote. And move forward with the existing plan.
Can still make motion, make motion. Said somebody do what you want, I'll make a motion, don't be a wage.
Yeah.
Are you still there, Nick?
Yeah.
What do you, how do you feel about the bathroom and the pavilion and the project?
What do I think?
Yeah.
Well. It's a lot of money. Well, like you said, it's really in the bathroom. And then to, uh. Tom's plan, I don't know, redesigning adult engineering fees, to try to knock twenty grand off or whatever. And then like the next year, at least, like I said, like you said, are we really saving anything? In the end, don't know. All guessing, you know?
I think that's what we all think, so we don't know the answer.
No.
Was anyone willing to make a motion to accept the plans as they are with the updated quote from Peak? Is the agenda item.
I'm gonna motion. To accept Pete's quote, but also how do you pay for it? I think has to get worked into that. I re-add that in. I think that needs to go over for discussion if that. Is an option. We already kind of discussed, we would have had to come up with, what was it, eighteen thousand?
Uh, like nineteen thousand, one hundred.
And Joe was offering to cancel the amphitheater and use those allocated funds that they, that are made in eighteen. Or I should say, not drain, save some hybrid of not draining savings account. And use that amphitheater, and then he promises to never put down another CIP.
Yeah, if you take the hundred and fifteen thousand. That's the joke is he could say that, but the reality is we will fund whatever he brings to us as his project, so.
That's not true. I've never built a single bathroom yet. He reminds me of it all the time.
So if you, if you take the hundred and seventy four thousand in bond money you have now. And the hundred and fifteen thousand from loss, that gives you two eighty nine, which is more than you need. So they wouldn't have to use their savings, they could preserve that, or you could make them use their savings and preserve more lost, you know, so.
And would you consider it to part complete with these two additions?
I would.
Whoever you are.
And share our communication. Or can you establish the original project we run forward? Two thousand.
It's been a while.
Yes.
Is that rethinking his path?
Well, I guess the real question come to the council is, you accepted knowing that he's using it funding from other places. Consider complete, which I know Mary Anne's going angry. Or do we go back to drawing board and say, send one like the one in Sheltie Park? Hoping it reduces costs, but simultaneously not re-incurring more costs on. Engineering fees and. Associated costs.
So Tom has a motion on the floor?
Yeah, based on how we paid for it.
I have to approve using the, um, on hand bond money and lost.
What about removing, uh? And as Mary Anne goes back to what you said earlier. Take an amphitheater off.
Yeah, that's the loss.
That's the loss.
And I can put that in there, the amphitheater line.
Alright, so there's a motion on the floor.
How far does that go into our lost funds then, through the end of twenty six? That report shows you that through twenty six, you still have, even if you did the amphitheater. You still had eighty nine thousand dollars unallocated, le- um, keeping the hundred thousand. Projective in fund balance. So you would still have almost two hundred thousand in loss, yeah. Just painful.
Alright, have a motion, need a second?
And then can I add one more thing? Have we talked about it, moving the bathroom to the, would be west? I know it's more conceptual during, but I just wanna make sure we have that in there. Sure, a second.
Moving bathroom to the west, is that where you're?
Yeah, so what I was asking about is cause to reduce the amount of green space being.
You wanna shift the building?
To the west.
You need to consult with an engineer.
So. It's moving. But.
What does this fund do? This is really painful, I'm so sorry.
Maybe we could look at a couple different options just to maximize green space. However we can. Or at least, uh, leave as much green space, you know.
So Mike, are you comfortable if I change that wording to moving the restroom to preserve contiguous green spaces possible?
Yeah. I, I prefer in order to reach it, but. That, that's my thing.
Any idea that's on additional engineering costs to redo those plans?
Roll out.
Just cause every time we redo these plans, it's, it's more expensive.
Yeah.
Say the motto. More expensive to do what? Save the cash rate.
So you're, Mike, you were saying, keep, keep the full building footprint says, it just, we weren't located.
Yeah, move them as far west as possible to maximize.
Just do that, isn't it? That's not that much, I mean. It's work. Just to ship them really.
Okay, we have a motion, there's a second, a second. So now I need a roll call, please. Mary Anne's excited to jump on there, so she wants time to offer.
I, I, no.
Nick?
Doesn't matter now.
Motion carried.
Duly noted on your point of.
Okay, panel, so. Let's move on to item number eight, which we hope is allowing easier. Consider resolution to set a public hearing date. Um, concerning a zoning code revision in the light industrial area. That date would be July eighth, our next regular council meeting. Need a second, please? Roll call, please?
I.
I, I.
I. Bye.
Thank you. Number nine, consider resolution concerning Midwest underground contractors. DOT application or use a highway right away for utilities. Who wants to speak about that, Oakland?
Uh, it's just sounds low, looking to come across where the ground. George Tankers, across one fifty one.
Everything's in order then, sir? The motion?
Motion, second.
Roll call, please, Mary Ann.
I, 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 I.
Thank you. Item number ten. Set a resolution for fiscal year twenty five transfers, yeah?
Uh, when we did transfers last meeting, I said, I was hoping that the garbage fund didn't need any. Well, I'm getting a little nervous. I did math again today and it looks like I might be ten dollars in the good, but. Let's move a thousand dollars to make him feel comfortable through next Monday. So that fund isn't overdrawn, because when it's overdrawn, even if it was five dollars. If my ten dollar plus is off, uh, we get written up in the audit. And usually we have to transfer twenty thousand, so we're much better this year. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Tom.
Alright.
Mike?
Oh, I, I.
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 Thank you. Item number eleven, we have a couple of claims that need some attention prior to the July eighth meeting. Need a motion to approve paying those?
Motion.
All in favor?
I.
I, 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 I.
Thank you. Number twelve. Mayor's comment, um, just one quick thing, got the word today that the. Their latent QTS lay down area broke ground today. And we did also today receive their five million dollar bond. But we're sorry. So. Be some action in that area moving forward, that's all I have.
I do, I have a question for John and. Shane, so there, there, it looks like they're running all kinds of, um, utilities in the ditches out in front.
Yeah.
Is that relative to the kind of like relocate?
Relocating.
Okay, that's what I was like.
Relocating the gas right now, so, so their contractor just moved in on Monday. Start relocating all the fiber optic. Um, media comm will be in next couple of weeks, alliance, that should be all, so.
Should all be in.
Oh, yeah, all franchise utilities are scrambling to get out of the way, so.
Wow, that's amazing, John, and we'll tell you, good job, because Spirit Rapids, they'd be marked as abandoned and they'd still live.
Media com is, uh. Might as well take the bulldozers and their stuff, and what are we talking about?
No, uh, out here, like, on one fifty one, they've been moving all kinds of stuff. Now, Cedar Rapids is just taken, I saw.
They don't do it, it's nothing, they don't do it in advance, please.
They have plans, and they're, they're going to change their criteria because they have a test out where things are marked as abandoned. Cause they're told that they have to move stuff and have them abandoned, and then they bid the project and they're marked as abandoned on the plans, but. They're not. And then it takes them months to do that. So they're deciding that they're not gonna let plans anymore until all the utilities have been relocated for real. So that'd be.
Alright, I don't have anything, anything else, okay, nope.
I, I have another question to give up. And I know it's, we can't talk.
Did you just?
I, I, I'm not one for hyperbole, and I know it's not the discussion or it's a point, but I don't wanna make comments. I apologize for missing the last couple of weeks, one of them's Joe's involved, the other, but, um. I know there's already a, a committee assigned for the next city administrator, and again, I know it's not a talking point, so we can't discuss it. But I did something I almost never do, because doing it makes you wanna jump out a window and outside, watch the YouTube video of, uh. His last couple of meetings. And, um, yeah, I know, I don't know why I did it, well, I do know I did it, but. I've had communications with other staff and council members, I have to proceed with it, and, um, I know you guys were talking about Chris. And, um, I don't, I just didn't like some of the comments, uh, that were being said. And, um, I thought he'd be an excellent interim position or permanent position, and I know. But there has to be discussion about it, but I think, um, if we're being honest. Um, and it's not so disrespectful to Joanne, but she's less qualified to Chris than to carry on these duties. And to suggest that he's not somehow qualified due to a meaningless paper degree from college, it's kind of insulting. If there's one thing I've realized over the last twenty years, it's. College degrees are about worth the paper they're printed on, unless there's something specific like engineering, you know, medical. Stuff like that, but if we've learned anything, what did a college degree do for the last one to jack shit? And to suggest that somehow we need someone from the outside that's non-misus. I think it's stupid. I, I, we always hire from within. And we find good candidates, cause we coach people up well, we train them up well. We wouldn't be suggesting to do that kind of stuff if we didn't have a plan in place or thought there were people capable. Of filling those positions, so. I just didn't really care for some of the comments that were made that were singling, sing, to single out people, we try and speak in generalities. To say that kind of stuff, kind of, uh. I love it, and that's kind of made, which is saying something. That's what we very, very bar. So anyway, I just, I don't. I, I, I talked to several people and, um. I don't know, I just thought it was disrespectful, and to suggest that somehow he couldn't be good at that is, um. I don't know, it's just a poor, it's, it just makes you look stupid, cause I think he's doing an excellent job right now.
Give you a little update, we have about twenty applications. Currently, and I think only one has city experience.
But do they have college degree?
They do, but, I mean, we said those wanted city experience and none of the others. And we, um, take applications until the seventh.
Oh, and that's what I was gonna say, cause I forgot to write it down, Joanne's reading off bulletin lines to who do we want to be the face of the city negotiating, you know, who do we want to? I don't know, it was implied that somehow Chris would not be up to that. That was the thing that stuck my craw. Anyway, I'm done.
Anything else before we get a motion to adjourn?
One, one thing, so we now have a. City of Fairfax LinkedIn page. So it looks kind of sad, we're only two people following it, so if anyone wants to follow it, has LinkedIn, just tell people. Um, the job is posted out there. It says that no one has applied, it's just routing to the subway, but it's tracking people, so no one's applied through LinkedIn. As far as what it says, but. Maybe they also see a few people. Scars going, I don't know.
Is it on Fairfax website, the link?
All the information is on the website, yeah. Well, we're linked for the application.
Yeah. Someone to, to see.
Okay, there are motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thanks, man.